Hanson.
Here.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Later is asked.
Open meeting compliance statement.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, and place and agenda was posted at a prominent public view at the location of the meeting.
Consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. 3.1 Addition of items of new business to the agenda.
There are none.
3.2 Minutes of the March 1st, 2020 regular meeting and March 3rd, 2021 special meeting. Approval of the financial report, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund and fundraiser, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, and approval of the child nutrition report.
Okay, we'll go back up. We're having some technical issues all of a sudden with our screen. So if you'll just follow along on attachments on your computer. So we have our March 1st and March 3rd minutes. I'm not seeing errors with those. 3.3 Our finance report. I have numerous attachments that I want to go through our finance report with you. The March investment is the first tab, and you can see by scrolling through that that all of those investments are current and up to date. Okay, you'll see right below that there's a finance report. In that tab, I have listed out our chargeables like I normally do. And you can see, this is a really good picture, I think, of one of the challenges that we're facing right now in our district. And I think you're seeing many districts across the state face with these same financial challenges. If you look at gross production, 615,000 less than last year. Motor vehicle, 97,000 less than last year. REA tax is not quite as low, but it's still under collecting again. The only fund that is collecting, over collecting in comparison to last year is our school land earnings, and that's only $7,000. You look at county four mill and those taxes, and we are under collecting $78,000 compared to last year. So you can see some challenges there with our local revenue that we're facing right now. If you go to the second page, that provides you the comparison year to year, FY '21 to FY '20. And the bar graph is your revenue, the line graph is your expense. I want to commend again, teachers and administrators. We have really made a concerted effort to control our expenditures. In school finance, you cannot control your revenue. We've seen that. The economy really controls where our revenue is. What you can control are your expenses. And you can see that our staff has done a great job as we've worked our way through this year controlling those expenses. And on that third page, I've given you a comparison just to see, to show you what's been accomplished. We've collected 1.3 million less, which is a challenge in and of itself. But we've also spent 1.1 million less as compared. And so when you look at our financial situation as a district, I think it's really important that we're all mindful. I've got a third attachment there that I'd like for you to open right below that. It says, "March 21st." And so as we look at our financial situation, I think it's important that we stay mindful of where we are at right now economically, and then not only from a national perspective, but from a state, from a local perspective. And when you look at our general fund revenue, if you look at that column G, which is the farthest column, that gives you your difference between what you collected between years. And you can see in almost every column, not every column, but in most comparisons, the collection is down. I think it's important to note when we look at our general funds, that we are, what we've collected as compared to our estimate of needs. So our gross production collection this year, 37% of our estimate of needs. And so those are very concerning numbers. When you look at REA tax, 77% of our estimate of needs. And so what we did from the outset is we began, we started our budget knowing that we didn't believe we would collect that much. And so fortunately or unfortunately, depending on how you look at it, that has been a big loss to us. Now, there's been some federal money that has helped us, but all of those federal stimulus packages that are sent to school districts, they're to be spent in a certain way and in a certain manner. So what we've tried to do as a district as we prepare going into next year is to use those federal stimulus money as one-time expenses, not something that we're going to have to have a reoccurring expense each year. So that just gives you an idea of our general fund. And as you go through those pages, you can get to the second page, and that kind of puts in perspective the bottom line there, the total. Our estimate of needs was 15.6 million, and right now we're projecting to collect 14.3. So we're going to be 1.3 million short there as we've been short in our collection of gross production. Now, the encouraging news that I think we have to remember, number one, we have to be mindful of this. We started a year ago when we absorbed our child nutrition director, and Mrs. Durk has done a fantastic job taking on that responsibility. We also could see that economically there were going to be some tough times, and we didn't renew some temporary contracts. And so all of those things together have helped put us in a better position financially. But as we move forward, we still have to make sure that we're mindful of our staffing and of our expenses. And so if you look at the bottom fund balance, you know, right now, collecting what we have and what our expenses are, we're looking at a 4.2 million fund balance, which is still a strong fund balance, is still a healthy fund balance. But it's just important that we, like I said, and I say this a lot, I'm sure principals get tired of me saying this and visiting with teachers, we want to maintain that strong fund balance. And we know moving forward into the next year, the economy, gross production, those things aren't going to automatically rebound. And so we're going to have to continue to control our staffing, and we're going to have to continue to control our expenses as we move forward. Are there any questions that you have with any of those before I move on to the activity fund?
No, Jeff. I would like to congratulate everybody because it is tough, and we're used to asking and getting, and I'm too. And it's just not going to happen. It's not going to happen for everybody. So thank you for your due diligence. I know you guys are in hot seats because the teachers come to you, and sometimes it's hard to understand all that. So thank you for being good stewards. It's going to get better. This will too. It'll all get better, but we just have to be patient and stay the course. So thank you.
And so want to mention quickly, I think as part of the finance report, I think it's important to mention some of the federal stimulus that we've had and some of the ways that we plan to use that that won't result in reoccurring expenses, but will improve our instruction for our students. And so that's kind of the time we're entering from a financial perspective, is finding that balance between maintaining the excellence of our student programs that we expect and that our community wants and needs and our students need, and also finding that balance with our staffing and class size. And so that's certainly always a difficult balance to manage. But I think with our principals have begun to work on those plans for next year, and I think that we'll have a good plan. So we received the first round of ESTER money that we have used this year, and that was used for a lot of our sanitizer, custodial supplies. It also really helped prepare us in the event of distance learning. And I think that's something to really be proud of, what we've been able to accomplish in our district that not many people have. We planned for the worst and really didn't face as many challenges as other people did. And I think that's a direct result of our community and our teachers and our administrators. And so we had purchased Wi-Fi spots, and we purchased laptops for our middle school students. We were able to purchase some computers that allowed our central office staff to be mobile in case that became necessary. So we were able to use that first round of ESTER money to really help support us through this year. So as we receive our next two rounds of ESTER money, we have to think about what we'll do moving forward. And one of the caveats to the expenses with all of these ESTER funds is how will you prepare and respond and prevent COVID? And so you have to be careful as you move forward. And so Mr. Mording has, we've talked a lot about one of the challenges we face with our middle school students is our Chromebooks were not as sturdy as they need to be because this is the first year we've ever really allowed them to take those home. And so we're going to do some purchasing of new Chromebooks that are sturdier, help on some of the breakage, and move those that don't need to go home as much down to our elementary students. We're going to work on providing some more mobile workstations for our teachers and staff that will allow them to have a desktop, but then also take that computer home to work on. And again, those Chromebooks will be able to use with students. We're going to look at a chiller at our high school. The chiller is out, which cools this room, the auditorium, and our hallways. And so that's a challenge right now. You know, we recognize that we're going to try to repair what we can. It was rebuilt in 1992, so it has lived out its life, and it's time for us to replace it. So we're going to look at some new HVAC items and equipment, some efficiencies throughout the district. And as we pinpoint some of those things, we'll bring those to the board and share those with you each month. Okay, 3.4 Our activity fund. Activity funds, we have had some track fundraisers, so you will probably see some T-shirt sales, so there's a little bit of a change in that. But that's really been one of the challenges with this also, is our activity funds are all in good standing and very healthy. But as you'll see in a few minutes with our interaccount transfers, not having crowds and people at our student events has definitely hurt our concession and our game. And so we really look forward to next year. We really hope that we provide more opportunities for our student organizations to raise money through our student activities. 3.5 There are no activity fundraisers. 3.6 Interaccount transfers. If you'll open up that attachment, that will provide you with our interaccount transfers, and this is our concession from football and basketball that we distributed out to each one of these classes, classes, excuse me, and organizations. And so what we did this year is we tried to raise the amount of money, the percentage of money that was given to the organizations up to 60%, which that leaves the 40% back for our startup next year. And I want to share with you, I think brings into focus, you can see that our amount of transfer is about 8,900, and that's almost half of the concession sales we had last year. And so when you talk about helping fund some of our student organizations and our athletic teams, it really hits home the importance of being able to have all of our fans and all of our folks come to our games. And there's nothing that we want more than that. So that is our interaccount transfer to our organizations. Child nutrition report, 3.7. The first attachment is the normal monthly servings that we have for our students. And you'll have to go all the way over to the fourth page. And on that fourth page, you can see that our four weeks of March into April. Again, we continue to serve lots of students and hear lots of good things about our meals at all of our sites. We recognize there'll be some tweaks to that that we make over the summer. One of the pilot programs, I guess, that we're starting is an order ahead for our high school students. It allows them to order from an app or from their computer, and then they can go through, and it's boxed up and has their name forms. They can pick it up and go eat at the cafeteria and get a student lunch. Any questions about our consent agenda items? There are no surplus. Any questions about our consent agenda? If there are one, I would recommend it's approved.
I'd make the motion to approve 3.1 to 3.7 as presented.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order encumbrances for the following funds for fiscal year '21. 4.1 General Fund as referenced, 4.2 Building Fund as referenced, and 4.3 Child Nutrition Fund as referenced.
So we'll start with our general fund, the top attachment. I think you can see, really, this paints a really good picture too of what we've done from an expense wise. If you remember in the past, a lot of times these encumbrance registers would be a page long, maybe even two pages long. And so you can tell how mindful our teachers and principals have been. So pulling out a couple of the larger expenses for the month. Purchase order number 349 is a contracted service with Janet Hittman for occupational therapy. Purchase order number 358, the 4,500 was the spraying of lawns and our bus horn. Purchase order number 363, we have some repairs to this suburban that had to get taken care of. And then you see many of these others for AMS tech supplies, which are reimbursable with her state programs, and then some lodging for our house. Our building fund, 4.2, and I'm sorry, I didn't open up the second attachment. The second attachment on the general fund, our substitute payroll. 4.2 Our building fund. So for March, a couple of repairs to bring to your attention. Purchase order number 52 for $2,000, that was repaired to the Washington floor cleaner. Purchase order number 55 and 59 have to do with our chiller. And we are in the process, as they were switching that over right before spring break, we had some mechanical issues with it. And so we're going to have to come back and repair it and replace that. And then purchase order number 56, that was to repair some of the bathrooms for 2,500 with Gagcon plumbing in Lincoln Elementary. Our child nutrition fund, 4.3, we have just one purchase order out of that fund. That is with Rose Plumbing. That was to fix a fog sink for $350 at that one. Any questions with our general fund, building fund, or child nutrition fund? If there are none, I would recommend that we approve.
Move to approve the purchase order encumbrances, 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3.
Second.
McDermott.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Item number five, superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll start first with 5.1, our resignations, retirements, and reassignments. And so Cindy Baker is our top attachment, the ultimate attachment. We have the retirement letter from Mrs. Baker. Mrs. Baker has been a longtime employee of Alba Public Schools and has done a fantastic job with all of our students. And so we will certainly miss her, but we wish her the very best in her retirement. Our second attachment is a resignation from Dusty Horn, and Dusty will be resigning from his Ladybug basketball coaching duties and his athletic director coaching duties. So we appreciate the time that Dusty has spent as athletic director and in his coaching duties. Our third attachment is from Crystal Murrow. We are going to miss Ms. Murrow. Her husband has taken another job out of state, and so she will be resigning her position as language arts teacher at the high school. Mrs. Murrow has been a fantastic teacher. I speak professionally and personally, having a daughter that's had her in class. She does a fantastic job. Mr. Brand, our fourth attachment. Mr. Brand, again, I could say, echo the same thing that I did with Ms. Murrow. Mr. Brand has done a great job as a high school history teacher and has also helped us out with middle school this year. Mr. Brand has an opportunity to go into private business, and so we wish him the best of luck. And he is offered to come up and help us with any aeronautics and instruction and lecture that we need. And so we appreciate Mr. Brand. Mrs. Countryman will be the next attachment. Mrs. Countryman will be retiring. She has worked with us and part of our kitchen staff for many years and has done a great job here at the high school. And so we wish Ms. Countryman the best in her retirement. And then finally, Makela Sterling has been a Title I aide at Washington, and she will be resigning from that position. She has other opportunities elsewhere. And so as we lose these employees, you know, we certainly have to really take a step back as an administrative staff and look at the best pathway forward. But we appreciate all these staff members, and we appreciate what they've meant to Alba Public Schools. 5.2 Communication. Just want to kind of hit a couple of highlights for you. One of the exciting things that we have, and I say we, I guess I need to say Mr. Smith and Mr. Thiele, have worked very diligently to put together a tournament for us to host next year, a basketball tournament in December. And probably the exciting part about that is to get to host that in conjunction with Northwestern and partner with them. So we'll be giving the board more details about that. Wanted to update you on the art room. Right now, the completion date is looking to be in late May. About 39% of that project is complete. We've got many openings right now in our district, and we're going to be really deliberate about how we fill those openings. We want to continue, like I stated earlier, to maintain excellence in all of our student programs, and also be mindful of our class size and our staff. Strategic plan. We're excited as administrative staff to re-kick off our strategic plan this May. And so we will be getting some information out to our community and to you all as a board at our May board meeting with more details. But we're going to have a time that the K-20 Center and the School Association comes back in May and reviews our progress prior to COVID and during COVID, and recalibrate ourselves after the direction moving forward as a district. And so we look forward to that. One of the components to the strategic plan was capital improvement. And we're in the stages of beginning to talk to and reform that committee. We've been very fortunate over the last few years to not have any village rate or bond issue in our community. And I think that one of the things that we're going to have to have a discussion about with our facility side capital plan committee is what does our investment in our students look like in the future, and what do we want our facilities to be, and what kind of investment do we want to make in our kids? And so there will be a discussion over the next few months about what a bond issue or an investment in our students will look like. Legislation. It has been a busy legislative session, as you all are well aware. As we'll see later on the agenda, there's been some changes to the funding formula. House School 2078 changed the funding formula for school districts. And I think one of the difficult things when you look at staffing, when you look at finances, is they changed that component from a three-year, multiple-year high, a three-year high to a one-year high. And so what that really gives you is a year to plan. And we all know that that's pretty volatile, especially now that a bill was also passed that allows transferring to become a little easier for students. And so again, I think it's important that we're deliberate in everything that we do, and that includes our hiring, and that includes any of our planning. We also are faced with a challenge that we'll see later on the agenda with a change to the funding formula that allows charter schools to be funded through local item or taxes. And so that is a real concern across the state as to how this will play out. But it's something I think this board needs to be aware of. And as administrators, we are also, as we move forward with our own virtual learning, what that looks like. And then finally, we've been working on some policies with Ms. McDermott and Mr. Hanson to review some policies. And with our legislation, there will be more policies that we will need to review. And we hope to bring those to the rest of the board in May. That is all I have.
Item number six. Items of current business. 6.1 Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the summer driver's education with instructor Steve Gale for May 15th, 16th, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and 25th.
These, the class is already filling up, and I would recommend to the board that we approve this agenda item for summer driver's education.
So moved.
Second.
Parker.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
6.2 Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve $175 fee to be charged toward the driver's education program.
So this has been our driver's education fee for the past few years, and I would recommend to the board that we stay at this fee moving forward.
Second.
Round slide 6.2.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Item 6.3 Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the revised extra duty assignment schedule for fiscal year '21.
If you look at 6.3, extra duty assignment, you'll open that attachment. On the very first page of that attachment, we have Casey Agathe that's been at it. We, and I think we talked about this at our last board meeting, we have over 80 students that are in track in the middle school, which is wonderful. And Casey's going to be able to help with our track and help our students both in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And so this is the starting extra duty pay that would go with her years of experience. And so I would recommend this revised extra duty assignment.
So moved.
Second.
McDermott.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
6.4 Discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the following contracts for fiscal year '22. 6.4.1 MAS Incorporated, our municipal accounting system incorporated.
We can do all three together if you'd like.
6.4.2 School to Work, and 6.4.3 Employee Evaluation System Incorporated.
So 6.4.1, our MAS system, does all of our payroll software and our accounting software, and also is part of our student information system. 6.4.2, our School to Work, that is our location. 6.4.2, our School to Work, that is our vocational rehab agreement that we use for our students. And then 6.4.3, OKTOE, is our evaluation system that we use for our teachers. It is a software program that allows the evaluations to be done electronically, and we also do that using OKTOE for our administrators' evaluations. If there are no questions, I would recommend the approval of those contracts. Move we approve 6.4.1, 6.4.2, and 6.4.3.
I second that.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
6.5, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve a resolution for schools and libraries, universal services, E-R-E-Rate program for 21, 22. This resolution authorizes filing of the Form 471 applications for funding year 2021, 22, and the payment of the applicant's, and the payment of the applicant's share upon approval of the funding and received services.
So I want to first of all thank Mr. Carroll. Mr. Carroll came on board prior to COVID last spring, and we have evolved as a district as probably every school district has, where technology is the basis for about everything that we do, from our instruction to getting into a door with a key card, to our funding system. And Mr. Carroll, Mr. Carroll has done a fantastic job leading us through that transition. So he's responsible also for completing our E-Rate request, and we're going to be able to improve some access at a couple of our sites through this request. And if you look at the far right column, well, first I guess look at the left column where it talks about the pre-discounted amount, and then you look at our far right column. And so you can see how beneficial E-Rate is for our schools, allowing us to purchase some of those infrastructure needs at a discounted price. And so if there are no questions, I would recommend the approval of this E-Rate resolution.
Make the motion, we approve 6.5.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes. 6.6, discussion with possible board action. Vote to authorize the school district's attorney in consultation with the superintendent of schools to initiate legal action against the Oklahoma State School Board of, God, I can't talk, against the Oklahoma State Board of Education, the Board, to address the equalization of funding, as set forth in the board's resolution approved at the board's special meeting on March 25th, 2021.
So this is, I mentioned this in my communication, and this is, this is something that's really important, I think, for all school districts and all boards of education to consider. When you look at the action taken by the State Board of Education, there is a concern, and it will happen, that funds will be diverted from local act of the form to virtual students. And speaking with our attorney, which is RFR, our district, our local attorney, COS's attorneys, the Score Association's attorneys, and the Center for Educational Law, all of these organizations are reaching out to school boards in an attempt to take this to another level and to our Supreme Court to stop this action. If things stay as, as the resolution stays, July 1, it will go into effect. So we've also, you know, I've mentioned a lot of the challenges that we face, and this would be one more challenge that we would face, all public schools would face moving into our next year. There is a funding formula for virtual schools. There always has been. What will happen if everyone goes back and we start dividing out our local act of the form and our local revenue and taxes, it might get smaller for everybody. And there's a real concern that faced with these situations, that there's going to be a lot of school districts that are going to really struggle as we manage through FY22 and try to get into FY23. State aid has to pick up the difference. So when schools drop back onto the funding formula, that spreads out state funding even more, and the state will have to pick up the difference. And that's going to be difficult to do. We saw midterm adjustment from the state that dropped our state aid $200,000. And so a lot of uncertainty surrounding this. We, this board has been very mindful of the local act of the form and our building fund, and to use that for our students. And I think that it is important for the board to consider this agenda item and the fact that some of that money could leave our local schools. Any questions that you might have? And if you do, and I don't know the answer, I'd be more than happy to reach out to people and give you the answer.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. In order to join this lawsuit, what will it cost the district financially to be part of that? I mean, you're going to pay our fair share of representation, but is it like a dollar a kid?
So according to our attorneys, all that will be dictated by how many join this lawsuit. Their goal is to use the ADA, your average daily attendance, to determine what the cost will be. It could be anywhere from $1 a student to $0.80 per student. It all depends on how many school districts join it. Now, you know, we, and there is some uncertainty there, because Oklahoma City Public Schools has their own lawsuit that they've started. So, but we believe most of the other school districts will join in this one.
Is this the one spearheaded by Tulsa Public Schools, or is this separate from that?
No, separate. I believe it's separate from that. But, but I probably need to check, because I'm not aware of what Tulsa is involved in.
I believe Tulsa and Oklahoma City have to separate.
Correct. I know Oklahoma City filed one last week. I do not know about Tulsa, but I'm going to look into that and let you know.
Do we have the option to, I mean, once we're in, we're in? I mean, can we opt out? Is, is there, you know, is there any, one of the rules for that as well? I think.
So maybe you table this agenda item and allow me to find out that information on Tulsa and what our commitment level is once the board, if, if the board chooses to adopt this resolution in May.
This goes into effect July 1.
Yes.
And they're going to address this supposedly, go to the Supreme Court to turn it around, because the governor signed this, correct?
Correct.
Then if we table it, does that put us in a bind as far as joining the efforts of other schools? And I'm just asking if we need to have a special meeting after you have those answers? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Once the lawsuit is filed, is, is the action tabled? I mean, does it move forward, does it?
As soon as the July 1 deadline, you're being?
Right.
I don't know that.
Oh.
That I can ask. So I think, I think it's important we all still have some questions that need answered. So I think it's important that we table the side of questions that need to be gone. Maybe we do need to have a special meeting.
And that's okay. I just want to, I think it's important we check all the facts, but also I think it's important we take care of what's ours. We'll always fight for our kids and for what our taxpayers will diligently provide for us, so, thank you.
Do we agree to table that? Do we need a motion to table it?
Let's take one just in case.
I think, I would make the motion, we table 6.6.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes. 6.7, discussion with possible board action. Vote to enter into a win-win negotiations with the ALBA Education Association and the ALBA Board of Education for fiscal year 22.
This is a routine item agenda that we bring to the board each April, and so by approving this agenda item, we will get win-win negotiations with the ADA. I would recommend it's approved. Move we approve 6.6.
Seven.
Seven.
Second.
Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
6.8, discussion with possible board action. Vote to approve the renewal of contracts for the following principals for fiscal year 22. Corey Smith, ALBA High School, Stephanie Martini, ALBA Middle School, Jenny Webster, Lincoln Elementary, Allison Tucker, Longfellow Elementary, and Shane Feeley, Washington Elementary.
I want to, first of all, publicly thank our administrators for their diligence and their effort in this school year. It's been a difficult year, and I think that you look at our ability to have school and stay in school and do all those things that our kids and our families have needed. It's taken the correct leadership of these principals to do that. And they also have a lot of really good people that are employed with them. And so I appreciate their work. We all understand as administrators that each year the bar is raised. The bar is raised, and excellence is demanded from our community, and that's a great thing. And so I appreciate their effort, appreciate all they've done for our school districts and our kids and our teachers and our support staff, and I would recommend the renewal of Make the motion that we approve 6.8. Second.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Phew! We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
A lot. All of you. I didn't, I didn't worry to go and listen to different communities talk about how much they've been out of school, how many things that have happened through the year, and I just applaud you and your staff, all of you, for keeping us in school. It's been, it's been more than amazing, really, and so we don't take you for granted, and just be nice to us so we don't have to go out in public and listen, but no. No, I just want to, I just can't thank you enough. I don't. I think, as a fellow educator, Jane, I'll second that, and I think it's interesting that across the state, people are in awe of our community, all three educational institutions that have been in school since August. And that is due to the leadership. It was, it was a decision, it's my understanding over the summer when this all came to head and, you know, that they sat down and said, what can we do? That we're all on the same page and make this work? And we've got a fabulous leadership team that has had to bite the bullet and face some tough questions about masks and mandates and why, and it has not been easy, but we do, I think we are, we are, I think a lot of schools, our size across the state, are in awe of you, and you should be committed for that, so thank you.
We appreciate your support.
Will you use this?
First.
Filing of documents approved by earlier actions. All right, I'll have to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.